It's good to see everybody. Happy to kind of come here and continuing, continue the conversation that Assistant City Manager Brian Wood first came off. I apologize for not being able to make that meeting. I was on vacation in North Carolina at that time. So, you know, also, you know, first off too, I do want to share congratulations to our city and our staff for putting on a great event this past weekend with New Year's led by Jen Bonig and Jay Brencheck and their department who took the lead on that. But it also showed a lot of great cross, you know, cross-department collaboration with Public Works, Fire Department, Recreation, just a whole bunch of people who ended up, you know, even the mayor was there working hard. So I think it just showed, I think it showed our community what we're doing with events and that sort of thing. And I think, you know, and I believe it's one of the, one of the reasons why, it gives us a reason why to purchase a stage. And this is why we're having this conversation. You know, you look at purchasing an asset like this, you know, it truly is an asset. And you do so because, you purchase things because you do things frequently and you have a long-term, and you have a long-term plan, right? And this council has done such a great job with creating momentum with how we continue to grow the city. And that includes with events. You know, we've been charged, you know, as a city, we charged ourselves with challenging ourselves to do multiple more events. And I think when you look at purchasing something, that's the reason why you purchase something. Is you purchase something because you have a long-term plan with it and you're going to be using it more frequently. And I think we're, you know, we've shown that we're past the one-offs of with these events where, you know, you rent something because you're doing it simply because you're just doing it here and there. And there's really no long-term plan for it and it's just, you're not doing it as frequent either. So that's one of the reasons why I believe this asset, you know, us purchasing this asset would be beneficial to us. And if you also look at what other communities are doing with events, Augusta, Bath, they're purchasing a similar stage from the same company. Portland has had a good reputation for a long time hosting events. Bangor now has a reputation for hosting concerts and events. And I think when you take that stance in purchasing an asset like this, it allows us to get that reputation, build a culture of hosting events and quality events, not just events, but hosting quality events like we did this past weekend. When you combine those two and you add those two together with a reputation and a culture of having good events and having the infrastructure and the assets to do it, that's where the economic impact comes from. That's where the economic piece of it is driven. That's where the ROI is driven, is because you have more and more people coming to the area, spending money, coming to the area because we host quality events. And they're looking to live here possibly because they know that they're going to have other things to do other than having a brand-new school that we're proud to be able to open and have a beautiful facility at Norway Savings Bank Arena, have a vibrant recreation program, you know, and have a community that they're proud to live in. So when you look at those things, it allows us to really stake, you know, give us a stake in the ground when it comes to running events in the state. And if you look at the, whenever you put on an event, there's different costs, right? You have different costs. You know, sound and lighting is one of them. That's going to be a variable cost no matter what you do. Because when you run a concert, that's different from running a graduation. Your sound and lighting is completely different, you know, and so you're always going to have a variable cost with sound and lighting. But the mainstay cost of anything is like if you need to run an event, you need a stage. At Norway Savings Bank Arena, I say no to a concert every single year because we don't have a stage. We've held one concert. We were able to work out an elaborate kind of relationship to make that happen and it went fantastic. And I'd like to be able to have the opportunity to do more of those every, every single year. So, you know, with that said, you know, this is an investment. I mean, you know, we're purchasing an asset that we hope that will be a return to us as well. This past weekend, I had a great conversation with Greg Cannabouris, who was our partner with the sound and lighting and who we rented the stage from. And I asked him questions if we had a stage, how, how a public-private partnership could work out between us two and if he could use it, if he ever needed to use it. And he said he would be completely open to having that conversation, how we could mutually benefit from, from having that stage and having him have access to it. So, and then also, there's also sponsorship and partnership opportunities that are tied to that as well. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there as kind of my input with, you know, my experience of running events. I think we have a great opportunity to continue the great momentum that we have here. You know, we've $30,000 over the past few years that we've spent on renting stages, right? Over the next five years, if we keep on going down this road, we'll be exceeding over $100,000 in rentals. So at that point, you know, are we really benefiting from what we're spending just by renting when we could have control of a great, great asset of our own stage and be able to control when we host events, what type of events we hold and truly take advantage of it? So happy to answer any questions that I've had with Stage Line, who have been great. I can reach out to them, they're based in Canada, right in Quebec. But, you know, happy to answer any questions.
Could you scroll down a little? I mean, do you have, just remind us about the pricing and what, you know, for the stage, exactly what it-
Yeah, sure. The base package for the stage is $140,000 with options and accessories that go to about $25,000. Those options and accessories are the wings that have, the wings that come on the side of the stage that allow us for sponsorship opportunities and those sort of things. Plus some little additional rigging that allows us to do some lights and sound and LED, LED boards, you know, and that sort of thing. You know, you can, these stages can get north of $200,000, $300,000 with all the accessories, you know, but we went with kind of the base accessories that allows us to do sponsorship opportunities as well as rigging for lights and sound as well as ADA compatibility to get people on stage. I know we, we want to use this stage for graduations, so steps, stairs, ramps, that sort of thing.
I don't know if this is something that Mark, you can answer, or maybe it's a question for Phil, but, you know, if we were to buy something like this, what I want to see is, what's the, what's the cost of ownership? So on a, on a yearly basis, what's the impact on the budget for staff, for storage, for maintenance, the whole, like, anything that you could predict? I understand there could be things that break that you don't know you're going to break, but like, what, what do we know?
I know from a storage standpoint, it's just finding a parking space for it because it is a tractor-trailer truck. So it's just hooked up back to a truck that you just bring to wherever you need to go. And it's fully enclosed, it can sit out, Greg has his sitting in a parking lot in his store, in his storage area and it sits outside. So it's well-protected, it's just, just basically looks like a normal back of a tractor-trailer truck. So from a storage standpoint, we don't have to find, we just find, need to find a place to park it. You know, I've talked to Dennis at Public Works, if there is an availability up there because it is gated, it is protected up there. From a maintenance standpoint, that is us, you know, of course, preventive maintenance. We, I think we've, you know, Phil has charged all departments to, when we look at budgets is, you know, whenever we put things in the budget, start looking at preventive maintenance. And being at the arena, that's something that we're having a bigger concentration on as well. So that will be part of the process, you know, and I can, you know, we would work with Stage Line on that as it relates to how often that would need to get looked at, you know, from a standpoint just for preventive maintenance purposes. But again, what's nice is they are not that far from us to be able to have access to them for that. When it comes to setup for human resources and human personnel, that really just depends on how many people you have and how quick you need to get up to stage.
I would just add, Mark, you know, we have been having conversations about events, staff, that's needed, that probably should be worked into the cost of these events so that when funding is being raised, brought in, however it's being brought in, needs to fund that. What we are tapping into right now is the generosity of our staff. You have some staff that are at New Year's Eve, every New Year's Eve, and, and that, you know, that's not what their job is. But there are some organizations out there we could contract with, or we could hire event staff people that, you bring them out and they know what to do, they've been trained. That's what I think will need to happen here. We'll need to have at least a couple that know the equipment, but then you can bring in an event staff team that manages things like stage setup. Because, you know, if we had, and we've had this before, we had a winter event at the first New Year's Eve where we had snow falling, which means we had crews out trying to make sure we're maintaining the roads, but yet that, that crew also needed help set, with setup. We need to shift that. So I think we need to continue exploring that. If we're going to continue to be being a city of these signature events, then it's time for us to have a vet team. And those are, you know, those not, that's not permanent staff, that's, there's organizations out there that you could either hire, or it's a team that we could recruit and put on for events that happen at the, at Norway that can also be used for other events. And so I think that's, I think that's the route we're leaning towards when it comes to the staffing component because trying to make sure we're getting some staff that might work in a certain department to say, yeah, I'll come down for a couple hours and take a shift, it's not easy. They have other plans and so, and for us to try to rely on that will become difficult over time.
Dana, Dana, did I miss anything from, I think you were talking, you talked about storage, staff?
The one thing that, the agenda packet discussed, and I guess I don't know exactly where it is, but there was something about like certifications or training or something that this place offers. What's the cost of that?
It's part of, it's part of the purchase.
Is there a limit there?
I would have to ask Stage Line how many, but they, that's, in order to, when we purchase a stage, they don't allow, they don't allow us to leave it unless we're, we have a fully-trained staff that's able to operate it. So that's, that's, that's not additional, that's just part, that's part of the whole purchase part.
Okay, thanks.
Mark, I've, I've read through all the information that you've had and I've also reached out to other vendors. A couple of things that I would like to say is to support this, first of all, that stage is one hefty cost, even though it may be ARPA money. ARPA money was given to the cities there to help the taxpayers and to maybe help to offset the cost of, of things. I would prefer that you find us or whoever is going to be the head of all this charge, at least three different sponsors that could help to cut this down to more than half. For the city to be responsible for maybe the stage on premises and whatever, but the sponsors would, would help you to pay for it, help you to maybe organize the team that it's going to take to set this thing up. I was down here early in the morning when they delivered it. I was down here in between their setup. There is no way, and I read your thing about training people, they'll train three or four guys or whatever. There's not three or four guys that can even set this thing up at one time. In, in the time that you guys asked it to be set up at this last concert, there was, some was around eight to 10 guys all the time working to get it up, to get it ready, to sound check, to do this, to do that, whatever else had to be done, to be ready to go. And then the sound check itself, you've got to have that, them have to be rented forever for what, we're never going to have them people hired on hand forever. So that's going to be something that's going to go on for the next 20 years if we do this for 20 years. I have to give a big hand to the mayor that we have right now, he's the one that's made this possible. The next mayor, that may not be his gun hole, is worried about, are we going to do these type of concerts in the city? Do we really want to put this kind of effort into this? So I, I wouldn't guess, or even try to guess, that 10 years from now, we're going to be doing this down on Main Street in Auburn. If we draw another 4,000 people, and that's a possibility, we wouldn't be able to do it down on Main Street anyway, so that might be something we've got to really think about in the future. Maybe the airport would be the better place to be doing something like this. But again, I, I wouldn't support spending 160,000 or 180,000. But if you could guarantee that we could get three sponsors that cut this price in half, I would support you in a minute.
You're assuming that I'm not going to be mayor in 10 years. I'll let it slide.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With Festival Plaza going to be renovated, will this stage setup and take-down mar the new renovations that potentially is going to happen there?
I don't think it would mar it at all. I mean, again, this is, this is not replacing anything or any future plans, this is, this is just an additional asset for the city to use, not just at Festival Plaza, but Anniversary Park, Norway, Norway Savings Bank Arena, the parking lot at Norway Savings Bank Arena. We, we would be able to take this stage all across the city of Auburn. And Leroy, exactly, airport, a lot of space, you could do, you could do something out there. You know, Marndale rents a stage every year for their member guest tournament, you know, this could be an asset for them. So it's, it's not just, it's not just at Festival Plaza, so I mean, it's just, this is, this is a movable, flexible stage that we get to control. And to your point, Leroy too, about the setup, they had a short time window to set that up. If we had, if we had the stage though, we control setup time. We control how quick, how quick we need to set that up and timing and that could help us allow us with staff. So, but, but I agree, I mean, there, it depends on time and setup and that sort of thing. So Belinda, no, I don't think it, you know, I think it more adds to the future aspect of what we can do.
And then will this tie into that thing that we campaigned, you're closer than you think? Because we threw that out to the public and people were getting behind it and then it just kind of went away.
No, 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 entertainment is closer than you think. Your New Year's Eve celebration, we've used all that, is closer than you think. So there's 1,000 different, you pick the noun or a verb, it's, yeah, we use that quite a bit, and it's a focal point of goauburn.me. So. I think I got a potential solution here if there's no other questions and maybe afterwards, and listening to everything. And to be honest, you know, being part of it, like Leroy said, since the beginning of the stage rentals, they're expensive, it's an annual cost. We've been very successful, did a lot of hard work, and the generosity of our sponsors in the community, raising anywhere from $40,000 to $60,000 in private funds to augment the budgetary funds needed to put these events on throughout the course of the year. For example, Emerson, Emerson Toyota, I met with Jim Emerson and, you know, we shook the tree and we got $20,000. And that's, he is a great presenting sponsor, okay? And we're very thankful that we have a lot of other sponsors too. I will say this, everybody has some really valid points. The concept is we continuously are spending money from our budget, okay, on a stage, and a lot of that is offset by philanthropical giving, which will continue. But I do believe we have two options here that might be able to solve everybody's concerns and still give us a desired result, which is a positive return on investment, okay? And that, that's really the thing, is how do we make sure we have a professionally-run concert, which we're known for, or events which we're known for, but we're also maximizing the return on investment? If we owned a stage, we would have a four-to-five-year payback on that stage, even though there's still an ongoing cost with lights and audio, as Counselor Walker said, absolutely. I think if we did one of two or both RFPs or combined in one RFP, I'll leave this to the city manager maybe to decide, if the council's willing, to look at what a contract would be, an RFP out for a five-year commitment to a stage, audio, light vendor for six events, I'm going to call it six, I could be off, but three signature events, high school graduation's a big one, they want to permanently move that to an outside activity, also including your one annual, you know, event in Norway, it might be seven.
At least one, I mean, at least one at Norway.
Well, maybe it's, maybe it's seven, but seven events, commitment, seven events every year for five years, and is there a bulk, bulk discount we can get? And that could probably include the city manager's entertainment staff. What is the full board cost out and who's going to respond to this? And it could be the folks that do darlings up in Bangor, the concert series by the river, whomever that company is to handle your, because absolutely true, those poor PW arborists are there every single New Year's. And so that's one aspect, and the other aspect is, I think, or RFP I should say, is to do an RFP saying, what does a private, public-private partnership look like? Okay, so if we went ahead and purchased a stage, and think of it as a small business loan for tangible equipment, with that and payback is an in-kind contribution back to the city where they commit to storing, maintaining, using it, providing the lights, fully outfitting, and doing entertainment sit-up for six or seven events annually. In other words, if we paid $150,000, you know, for a stage and the recruitment for that stage, but the company is running it, managing it, maintaining it, and providing what we need, which is, we've got an event, be there at 2 o'clock, thank you very much, we know it's done, we've accomplished our mission, without having to store it, without having to maintain it, without having to train staff on it. So I think those two aspects could be used both ways. Again, saving money, getting standardized, high-quality venues for what the events we're doing, so we know in the future, even past this council, past this mayor, that we have high-quality events going on. But we also throw this out and help some business within Maine, or New Hampshire frankly, whoever responds to the RFP, you know, succeed, because they're going to use the stage at Marndale, at, in Brunswick, or whatever, when we're not using it, but we'll get first right of refusal, we'll get that economy of scale. So I don't know what the council thought about those two ideas, I don't know if that could be wrapped up into a single RFP, or had to be two RFPs, but it'd give us something to look at. Either way, saving money, ensuring quality, that's what we want to do. And a little flexibility. So thoughts?
I don't think we, I don't think we lose anything by doing an RFP, I mean, if we don't, if we don't like what we get, we don't have to do it. So I think that's a great idea, let's see what we can get, see, see what kind of response there is.
No, I tend to like the, the second option. Obviously contingent on finding the right partner, willing partner, but if somebody can use this for their own devices, but reserve our first right of refusal and incur the management and the maintenance of it, I think that's a win-win.
Rick doesn't like music anyways.
My, my inclination would be just to buy it. I sort of feel like we're competing with the private sector. If we do an RFP and then we're sort of, it's a public-private partnership where we're doing something for ourselves, but then they're doing other stuff and then you're going to be fighting about, do they do our times when we want them to, and they've got other stuff, and who's the boss, and, you know, who's, you know, who's the priority if you do that? It might be better to just buy it. The big concern, I think, I, you know, understand what Leroy's point is, because I think the maintenance issue is, it's not so much maintenance, it's just more operation. And then in terms of maintenance, it's probably like the Smokey's Greater Shows, where you've got to make sure everything's tight and functional. It's not like, there's a lot of moving parts, but there's not much, I think I saw there's like a one-horse electric motor or something, it sounds fairly simple, but it's not that simple, it's, it's actually pretty complicated, so I don't-
The other is, it's a soundboard, it's the, I mean, you've got to have that bands come and they plug in and go, right? That's their whole concept, and lights and everything like that. I don't know, I just, I turn it over to the manager. I mean, I'm glad we're talking about this, I think the goals are good, I don't think anyone disagrees with that. How do you get there though?
I think what Counselor Staples said, you know, it doesn't, there's no harm, right? You could do one, see what the results are, and then make a determination whether or not you want to move forward with it. And we'll bring those results back. So I think we can easily do that. I do think, after looking at this slide here, I do think we need a planes, trains, and barbecue event though. You know, that's a, I mean, we have, we have an airport, we have rail, we should be looking at that, so, but we'll, we'll work on getting that together and we'll put it out and then we'll get the results back.
I, I still think there are vendors out there that will share the cost of this with us there, like Emerson puts up 20,000 for whatever reason they do it, but there's, there's others that have cut that kind of money that could flow out there as well.
Thank you very much, we'll go on to the next-
Appreciate the time, Happy New Year again.
Thank you, Mark. And thanks for carrying me during the announcements, emceeing duties at New Year's Eve Auburn, appreciated that one.
My pleasure.
Okay, next on the agenda for tonight, we have a presentation, if I remember correctly, Phil's getting there, okay. Senior Tax Rebate and State Tax Stabilization Update, giving us some numbers, because I believe deadline has passed for the state program.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I did ask Kelsey Earl, our Deputy Finance Director, just to put some information together for you so you know where we are after one of the deadlines. We still have a deadline of February 1st for the Auburn program. And so we want to make sure we got this back out to the public again, just to make sure that people know that there's still an opportunity to apply for the homeowner relief program. The applications were made available October 28th. So far, we've had 520 applications that have been brought in, and some of those might not have met the criteria, so there is a criteria with that, which means that your taxes would have had to have gone up at least $300 to receive this homeowner relief. And then we have the tax stabilization, as the mayor said, that's the state, state program, just under 1,500 applications. This is a heavy lift. I ended up having to bring in a part-time staff member just to help process these applications with the state, make sure they're, they're where they need to be. This is an issue we need to address with the state as we look for, moving forward with this. There are some revisions that are probably going to come out regarding, or at least suggested for this bill. The State Treasurer's Office needs to be the entity that takes care of this and not local municipalities, so that is going to be something that I think we need to push back on the state on. We'll, we'll continue doing that, but we made it an easy process for our residents anyway, with very limited support from the state to make sure this happened and to ensure that our residents were able to apply for this and get that funding. That deadline did expire December 1st. And then, so we have February 1st on the other, on the homeowner relief. Hopefully people still see this and will apply. If they haven't, they can call, they can call the Assessors' Office, Tax Office, they, both departments can easily answer any questions they may have prior to coming in and completing that application. So, questions? This was just an opportunity for you to hear where we are currently, also try to help promote that we still have the homeowner relief for another month.
So that, just quick math, we allocated $750,000 ARPA money, and right now, we've committed about $156,000 on the homeowner relief program. Correct? Am I right on that?
Three hundred.
Yeah, we, either we're publicizing this, or, I mean, usually how, how things flow is you get a big push right in the beginning, it tapers off to almost nothing, and then a bunch of last-minute applications. I honestly don't think we're going to go above 1,000 applications for the local program. Just FYI, that ARPA money will then flow back into the ARPA pod to be reallocated.
I think it's interesting to notice, it's about three times the number of people that applied for the tax stabilization, because that's a long-term thing and it's a bigger impact versus the 300 one time. People are maybe less enthused about that, but are more concerned about the long-term. But I agree with you, Phil, the state really needs to step up and do some patching and backfilling on the legislation, because it wasn't really very well thought out, yeah.
And there was no requirement regarding how much your taxes had gone up? So I think we had several people that came in to apply, but their taxes hadn't been increased more than $300, so they didn't qualify for that.
Any other questions? No? I'm glad we can get this out. Okay, next on the agenda.
Mayor, I think we're going to have time to actually go ahead and do both executive sessions during the workshop.
Yeah, looks that way, that's great. What's next up on, there's one more, I believe?
No, it's just executive.
Was it just executive session on that one? Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, we have an executive session to discuss economic development pursuant to one MRSA 405-6C. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Motion to move.
Second. How much Councilor Walker, Secretary of Councilor Whiting, all those in favor? Opposed, unbeing? We now see an executive session, there will be no action out of executive session, and we'll probably enter into our second, our last executive session, which is on tonight's agenda, directly after this one.
Just use on here, it spread out.
And good evening, folks, and happy new year. Welcome to our first meeting in 2023. It's January third. It's a regular meeting. If you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have thirteen consent items on the agenda tonight, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mister Councilor Walker, second for Councilor Warren. All those in favor, please.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to request that we remove the planning board appointments from the consent agenda.
Be a little bit more specific on that, Councilor Whiting. Each one separate order.
There are, I think, six appointments to the planning board.
And Councilor Whiting, if you're going to remove something from the consent agenda, you need to have each individual motion as a separate item and request.
My apologies. I would request that we, um, remove, um... I guess, uh, yes.
Make it easier if you had just one specific person that you wanted to remove?
Well, I'd like to discuss them all in executive session. I haven't been happy with the appointment system since I've been on the council. I don't think it works the way it's intended, and so I would request an executive session for all of the planning board appointments.
So are you asking to take which order numbers off the consent agenda item, please? And we cannot ensure an executive session. Each one will have to be voted on in turn under new business.
Okay, uh, let's see. Uh, order number oh five, uh, this is number five. Oh five dash oh one oh three two oh twenty-three. Or... Order number six. Order oh six oh one oh three two oh two three. Order seven, uh, no, order seven, uh, dash oh one oh three two oh two three, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. We have those removed off the consent agenda item. Um, I asked for a vote on the remaining items not removed by Councilor Whiting. All those in favor? All those opposed? None being. Remaining order numbers, pass. We'll take those. That is one, two, three orders stated. We'll take those under new business in turn. Okay, moving on. Next to the minutes of the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two regular city council meeting, are there any corrections? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
We got a motion from Councilor Haas, second from Councilor Staples. All those in favor? Pass six zero. Uh, I'm sorry. For the record, too, Councilor Milks has an excused absence tonight. I should say that again. Now we're on to communications. Lewiston Auburn, or as I like to call it, Auburn nine one one. Uh, if you could, please come up, and we have a presentation with some good data points, and please introduce yourself as well.
Good evening, Mister Mayor, councilors, Mister City Manager. Uh, thank you very much for inviting us to speak tonight, share some information about the center. Uh, start off with some introductions. Uh, my name is Tim Hall. I began my career in emergency communications just shy of twenty-three years ago, which does not seem possible. I came to the nine one one center here locally about thirteen years ago, first as a dispatcher, uh, then promoted to a supervisor position, then to the operations manager position, and a year ago was appointed as the director of the center when the previous director retired. All the way to my right is Drew McKinley. He joined the nine one one center about eight years ago as our IT director. In addition to being our IT director, as well as maintaining our radio system, he also provides services to each of the police and fire departments for each city, as well as the Andersgong County Dispatch Center and the towns of Sabattis, Mechanic Falls, and Livermore Falls. And immediately to my right is Mark Kair. He joined the center twelve years ago, actually twelve years ago today, and was first serving as a dispatcher, subsequently promoted to the supervisor position, and now occupies the operations manager position and managers our accreditation. Just want to give a, a brief overview of the nine one one center itself, because I think a lot of people mistakenly believe that, uh, we answer nine one one calls, and that is all we do, is answer nine one one calls. I've given countless tours over the years, and people just assume that we answer somebody's call for help, and then we transfer it to, say, the fire department or the police department, and that is not the case at all. We handle the call from start to finish. We do all dispatching services for all of our police and fire departments. Uh, in addition to serving the city of Auburn, we also serve the city of Lewiston, and we also serve as the nine one one answering point and dispatch center for the town of Poland. We are the only Kalia accredited center in the state of Maine. We first achieved that accreditation back in two thousand nine and still maintain it. And just to touch on some of the call volume that we experience, we are the fourth highest call volume center in the state of Maine. Uh, it's pretty impressive to think about that when we serve three communities, and many of the public safety answering points or nine one one centers, uh, might serve more communities than we do, but have a lower call volume. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, we don't have twenty-two's statistics finalized yet, but in twenty-one, just to give you an idea, we were just under one hundred thousand, uh, calls for service. Uh, what that means is anytime we send out a police truck, police car, a fire truck, or an ambulance, generates that call for service, and we were just shy of one hundred thousand. We answered, uh, just under forty-eight thousand nine one one calls. And more shocking to most people is that our non-emergency line, we processed almost a hundred and forty thousand phone calls, uh, in addition to the nine one ones. Non-emergency calls are actually the bulk of our work. Uh, if you think about any time there's a minor fender bender car accident, or shoplifting, or harassment, or a barking dog, or any of those myriad of things that somebody might say they are calling the police for, uh, those calls are coming to us. We're the one that ma- we're the center that manages those calls for the communities. Uh, some of you, I believe, were on the council, uh, but I think most of you are probably new to the council since, uh, this project began back in twenty twenty. Uh, both cities agreed to fund a radio replacement project. Uh, that project has gone on for the past, I would say, three years at this point. Much like everything, we were delayed by COVID quite a bit, uh, leading to delays in shipping parts for the radio system, leading to delays in bringing folks in from out of town because they had to quarantine, that sort of thing. So it is certainly behind schedule, although not greatly. Uh, the good news is, at this point, we are still under budget, so we'll take that. Um, in August of twenty twenty-one, both police departments switched over to the new radio system, and most recently in November of twenty-two, the fire departments have both now moved over to the new radio system. Uh, we certainly have experienced some challenges throughout the project. Uh, we still work through some of those challenges, like any major, uh, change in operations. You're bound to have most of those challenges centered around audio quality, not just for the responders, but also for the center itself, and almost all have been resolved at this point, but we still work to tie up some loose ends with that. The IT director certainly deserves a lot of credit for working on this implementation. Uh, we certainly would not be where we are today without his involvement. Uh, the entire radio system is pretty much all computers, just like everything else is these days. Uh, computers and servers and microwaves, but not the ones you find in your kitchen and other things that are beyond me. Uh, in addition, the radio company that we are working with, EF Johnson, uh, actually provided radios to each one of the schools within the cities, so they have immediate access to the nine one one center via radio, uh, whether it's a panic button that they can hit that rings in directly to us, or they can actually speak, uh, back and forth with us on a radio channel, and the police officers have that same ability to communicate with the school staff in the event of some sort of emergency, and the radio company actually provided those as part of the project. They were not an additional cost. I certainly could not appear, appear before you without sharing some of our challenges, the challenges that we currently have, and some challenges that I see going forward. And this will sound familiar to you. It's staffing, and staffing, and staffing. Um, for probably the six months of the thirteen years that I have worked for the nine one one center, we've been fully staffed. Uh, that's not a good record for us. It's something that we've been dealing with for many, many years, and the rest of the world is now certainly being impacted by the same shortages that we have always faced. Uh, in November of this past year, we were four positions short, uh, and then suddenly four other people submitted resignations. So suddenly we went from, uh, a dispatch center that's supposed to have twenty full-time dispatchers. We already had four down, so we were sixteen, and then we lost four more. We were down to twelve. And then in December, uh, two of our dispatchers went out on medical leave. That left us at ten people. So we were at fifty percent staffing, uh, for the month of December. I'm grateful that the two folks that have been out on medical leave, one has already returned and one is due back next week. That puts us back to twelve full-time employees, which is nice, uh, but it's still far short of where we should be. We do have three folks currently in training, and we have another person that will be starting next week. Uh, we are constantly recruiting, but it is difficult at best, uh, to even get somebody in for an interview. Uh, they might express some initial interest, but as soon as they find out it involves working evenings and overnights and holidays, uh, that interest quickly goes away. Uh, the number one reason, or number one and number two reasons cited when people leave is, uh, the schedule, uh, and to a lesser degree, I would say, the, the wages, uh, but they certainly play a role. Uh, but most everybody now is trying to find some sort of work-life balance, and you are not likely to find that in a nine one one center. Uh, it's a twenty-four-seven operation. You're working no matter what, so it's extremely challenging. We've been working with the dispatchers to come up with some scheduling alternatives. Uh, unfortunately, it's difficult to work in any scheduling alternative when you're so short on staff. So it's kind of a vicious cycle for us at this point. Our new employees, when we do hire somebody, uh, we can expect that it will take four to six months for them to complete training before they're actually assigned to a shift and are able to take calls on their own. Uh, the amount of learning that must take place for somebody to work on their own in the center, and it's, it's not unique to our center, and certainly every nine one one center, is just astronomical. Uh, the number of things that you're expected to know and recall in seconds. Uh, you don't have time to go look up a policy or check what you should be doing. You just have to know these things. Uh, it's an, it's a very difficult challenge. Uh, I don't know that we've hired anybody in a number of years that has not been completely shocked at how difficult the job is to learn. The, when, when I talk about wages, uh, we're running approximately, I would say, seven to eight percent below the average of other nine one one centers in the state of Maine. Some are starting to offer pretty sizable increases in pay to attract and retain their staff. So we've got a nearby nine one one center that is hiring at a rate of, that's about seventeen percent higher than what we are able to offer at this point. Uh, it's very difficult to compete with, uh, other wages for other centers in that aspect. I recently con- conducted a, uh, project retains study. It is a study that is done by APCO, which is a national, or actually an international dispatch organization, uh, and the study allows you to determine what your staffing levels should be. Uh, and even if we were fully staffed, we are still understaffed. Uh, according to this study, we should have an additional six full-time employees on our payroll. Uh, in January of this year, actually, starting this month, we had a twenty-first dispatcher position authorized through the budget process last year, and trying to move us to that goal of separating, uh, our call-taking from our police and fire dispatching duties, because it is just becoming too difficult to try to balance both. If you think about trying to talk on the telephone and walk somebody through delivering a baby or providing CPR, uh, while you're trying to speak to the responding paramedics or police officers, it's becoming more and more difficult to maintain that ability. Approximately ninety percent of our budget is personnel-related. Uh, we carry all of our benefit lines in our department budget, such as the health insurance, workers' comp, and unemployment, because we are an independent agency from the city through an inter-local agreement. It, it's almost all personnel-related between wages and overtime costs. Uh, and our overtime costs, as you might imagine, are pretty high. And I think that is a general overview of, of the center itself, some of the challenges that we see currently and in the future. Certainly, if anybody has questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them as best I can.
Does anybody have any questions right now? I'd like to, first of all, thank you for everything you all do. I know I've toured your facility, I've been there many times. Uh, and I understand your labor issues. I've got a couple of questions on your non-emergency calls, and I, I'm not expecting you to have the answer to this now.
Sure.
Uh, but could you provide to the council what your average handle time is for a non-emergency call versus an emergency call, plus what the end call disposition is for non-emergency calls? How are those handled? How are those punted off? If your cat's in a tree, I have not, in my X amount of years in Auburn, seen any cat skeletons in any trees. So I have a feeling they either find their way out, or a bird eats them. But, um, either way, I want to know how that's punted off to the non-emergency line. Um, I think this is part of a larger overall education. I look at Councilor Walker, because he's a council representative that I appointed to the nine one one dispatch center. Um, how do we communicate out to the public the definition of the difference between emergency calls and non-emergency calls? Uh, there is a finite resource that we have, and we're grateful, but it is finite.
Right. Yeah, I think the difficulty, we, this is something that we've struggled even internally, of how do, how do we get that message out to folks about the things that they maybe should or should not be calling for? And unfortunately, the reality is we become the, uh, place of last resort, because if not us, then who? Uh, an example of, I, I think the cat in the tree is probably a bad example, but to use, but I'm going to use it anyway. If, if there is a cat in the tree and somebody wants to call to get a hold of the animal control officer as an example, there is no way to reach him without calling us. Uh, so, so it's, it's kind of a lack of choice. Uh, something as simple as the jail needs a, they have somebody that's making bail, and they have to go notify that person's victim that this person is about to be released from the jail. Uh, they have to call us and request a police officer go and makes that notification. They have to call us. There, there's nobody else for them to call to be able to do that.
Is there nobody else for them to call by law, ordinance, or just by choice? Not choice, but it'd be just because of the bureaucracy that...
Just circumstance, I think, in most cases. There are some things that are, are legal requirements. Um, one that comes to mind are protection orders. When protection orders are issued by the courts now, they are legally obligated to call the nine one one center and have a police officer attempt that service. So there are certain things that are requirements, but other things certainly that aren't necessarily a requirement. It's just...
Well, like the parking garages in Lewiston, historically, if someone couldn't open the gate and they hit the push-to-talk button, that was a nine one one initiated call.
Correct.
It would go to one of your dispatchers.
Correct.
And you would have to manually open the gator through remote access. Those are the types of calls. You know, and I, I don't even know how, I think that's stopped. I think Lewiston stopped charging now because of that.
Right.
Uh, but I would like to know what types of other calls, based upon your expert opinions, could be triaged to someplace else through some sort of mechanism.
Sure.
Um, and if anything, we could do to help eliminate those unnecessary, unneeded calls, uh, that'd be great. And also... that'd be great. And also, the amount of time taken on those calls, too.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions or requests? No? Hey, guys, thank you very much. You're there 24/7.
Thank you.
I hope I never have to talk with you.
Yes.
But I'm glad you're there if I do. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation, and this is a great one. This is a presentation for, of recreation nonprofit groups. So if I could have, kind of right up to the DS here, please, the following groups. Before I actually call them up, if the council remembers, we authorize a $50,000 ARPA, Federal American Recovery Protection Act dollars, allocation out to five nonprofit youth-based organizations servicing youth in Auburn. And the ones that are here today, I'd like to have them come up. I'd like to recognize them and say thank you for providing, really hitting our goal, or trying to achieve our goal of universal athletics for all of our youth, which we've done within our budget, and now we're utilizing third-party organizations to help promote as well. And then if they could, just give us a minute or two, or a sentence or two, on what they did with some of that money, so we can get that feedback loop going, so that people know what's happening. So first off, we have Auburn Suburban Baseball and Softball. I'm not sure if they're here tonight. I've got a feeling they spent money on baseball and softball. Phoenix No Limits Karate, if you could just come right up here, stand in front, please. The YMCA of Auburn and Lewiston. Steve, please. The Auburn Ski Association, both the outgoing, thankfully, and the incoming, gratefully, president of that organization. And Maine Basketball Club, I don't think they're here today. No. But if you all could come up, and I'm going to, you know, I'd like to thank each one of you. If you could, just introduce yourself. If you get right up close here, so we can get you in the cameras. We'll get some pictures. Start with Steve. If you could just give us a sentence or two about what you allocated the grant for.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name is Steve Wallace. I'm the CEO of the YMCA of Auburn and Lewiston, and I'd like to thank the council for their support. This year, we used the $10,000 grant that we received towards our summer camp. And summer camp for us, as you may remember, a few years ago, we used to go to a place called Camp Connor, and that was closed because Poland wanted to be able to take some of the beachfront property back, the town of Poland. And so we have a brand-new camp, and that camp is not yet sustainable, because we don't have inclement weather-type areas to put the kids, things of that nature. And so when it's not sustainable, it puts stress on the programs. So the $10,000 that you provided helped us in three major areas. The first major area was our pool. We have a new outdoor pool at the Outdoor Learning and Education Center, and so we were able to teach swimming skills to about 122 kids. And so noodles, the noodles that go with little kids float on them and whack each other with them, even though we tell them not to. That's one thing. The second thing is archery. And so we have an archery range where we have eight targets, and every year it needs new arrows, it needs new targets, because of, you know, they just kind of fly into the woods and we never see them again. And then the third big area was actually recreation. We've got a new disc golf course. And so, you know, the kids just love to be able to run around, and so, you know, you don't have to learn how to play basketball or flag football. You just have to learn how to throw a disc, and it's one of those new and upcoming things. And so those three areas are where we use the funds, and it really did enhance our programming and help the kids to have a more enjoyable time at our summer camp. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Kevin Orell, I'm the former president of the Auburn Ski Association. I'm here with Alan McKinney. He is the new president of the Auburn Ski Association. And thank you for everybody who voted to release these funds to the community and help the community out in youth programs. We earmarked some of this money, I believe it's about 30%, 30% of this money to the Mayor Chadbourne Learn to Ski program. And actually, Steve, you guys are helping out with this, with that program as well, helping out with transportation and our means testing and things like that. So what this program does is it gets kids that have never skied before, or some that have advanced training in skiing, right out here at our local Lost Valley. And if you haven't been out to Lost Valley, it looks a little different than your backyard right now. They're still skiing out there. So you can still go out and ski. And I think the other funds, we actually haven't even voted on yet. Correct, Alan? Do you have anything else to add on what else we're going to use that money for? Probably with upcoming programs that'll be voted on. But in years past, we've used money for purchasing gates, racing equipment, safety equipment. This particular $10,000 really bailed us out. If you're into skiing, you notice that the past, not this year, but the past couple of years, we were not able to have our ski swap, which is our major fundraiser. So we lost a lot of money in funding. So this really helped us out a lot. And for that, you know, we thank Auburn very much for that.
Hi, I'm Donna Harris. I am CEO of Phoenix No Limits Karate. We are a nonprofit karate school in Auburn. We use the funds, thank you very much, for our KICS Anti-Bully Program. KICS is an acronym that stands for Kids and Control Keep Safe. We've thus far taken the program into two Auburn schools, Sherwood Heights and Walton, and we've actually gone through the first two phases of the program. So this is a multifaceted program that involves video training, hands-on presentations, workbooks for the students, and individual or small-group conflict resolution training. We work with the staff to create a custom program for each school based on their needs, and I actually just visited those two schools today to just kind of check-ins. We're always checking in on them, seeing what we need to do next to continue the program. Next, we're going to be filming some anti-bully videos this Friday, actually, that are going to be used as an interactive program for the schools. And we're reaching out to the other schools in Auburn to get them involved as well. We still have a little bit of the funding left, so we want to spread it to all of the Auburn schools as much as we can. Thank you very much.
Counsel, you want to get me? me one day and said, y'all need to help support the nonprofits who give our kids some sports programs. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, thank you, Kevin. Okay, moving along. Maybe not. Okay, next on the agenda is, where did I do my reading glasses? Are they over there, Brian? Ah, jeez. Oh, hey, look, extra pair. I'm not old. Okay. Council Communications about and to the community. Starting on the right, Council Gary, you have any communications? Council Whiting?
Just teaser to look for some fairly big announcements from Museum LA in the next month or so.
Yeah, Council Whiting, thank you. I just got a feedback from Rachel, and she said you're just a great representative for Auburn. Personal contributions as a board member. Now, thank you for serving. It's a great, it's a great thing that you're doing. I appreciate
Thank you for the opportunity there. We just had a great New Year's Day party for age-friendly senior citizens mostly, and we had 104 people that showed up at the senior center at Pettingill Park, and we watched the ball drop at noontime during the day, so we didn't have to stay up to midnight and then couldn't get up the next day. So we had a great time. We had a lot of good food. We had a lot of volunteers that helped us, and the weather was just perfect for all of us. Thank you.
I'm sure the mayor will talk about this as well, but I attended the New Year's Auburn celebration down here in Festival Plaza, and it was a well-run event. The city staff did an amazing job with the setting that up. I wanted to thank you guys for that. Also, the decorations around the downtown right now look great. I really appreciate all that work that's been done for that. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, Council Staples stole my thunder on that. Just what a great team we have within Auburn. Jen Bonag, who's within Economic Development, really spearheaded everything that was going on that day at the event with the mayor, and did a great job of just aligning the vendors, aligning those that were coming in so that they would have a great event. Central Maine Pyrotechnics did a super job with our fireworks. We had well over 3,000 people, I would say. Mayor says four.
Maybe five.
So well over 3,000 people that were attending that event, and we had really no incidents to speak of. So we really appreciate the public that came out and participated in celebrating that event with us. Thanks.
Yeah, and I echo, though, I did not see Council Staples nor the city manager there. They claimed they were, and I, well, I didn't see either one of you, so it's still in doubt. Now, it was a great event, and if you've ever thrown a party, your biggest fear is that nobody will show up. Your second fear is that it's going to rain, and we kind of avoided both of those. So it was a huge event. Again, I echo all the thanks. This is something that, from a, I started this, I dreamed this crazy idea up back in 2018, and it really started taking off. And now that we have staff support, we have a consistent following, this is looked at immensely positively throughout Maine and throughout New England. We were trying to calculate economic development on this one event, and we calculated using approved tools around $250,000 worth of direct economic impact to the city of Auburn and its businesses. The earned media associated with this, probably north of a half a million dollars. So our brand is definitely high. From everything this council's done, this event is kind of icing on the cake, and I think there's no looking back. And I think our three signature events annually, plus some small ones, are really going to help solidify us as the hottest housing market and the greatest city in New England. So thank you for that. On to other things. I've been talking to staff and looking at the chain of events, if you will, the narrative over the last year or so, as we've been participating in zoning reform, specifically with regards to the watershed, and a lot of the studies that we've seen, and in light of some of the recent studies, the peer review of the FB Environmental that CEI has produced, and looking at how, really, we've got some consensus going now between multiple scientific organizations, and our goal that you've all stated in the past of making sure we have a very firm set of ordinances that protect Lake Auburn and that can be propagated to the other upper watershed towns. And looking at the history associated with the agricultural and resource protection zone, and how it's being used within the watershed as a de facto conservation zone. I'm asking staff to put together an ordinance, excuse me, an order for you to review and you to debate and vote on, sending to planning board, them to give us a recommendation on converting the agricultural and resource protection zone within Lake Auburn's watershed into a city conservation zone. We have already eliminated the Lake Auburn watershed from our discussion on the income standard in the act. Before that, five years ago, we voted to exclude the watershed, excuse me, the agricultural zone within the watershed, from the 50% to 30% income rule. So we've already shown it, and frankly, if it looks like a duck and walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it probably is a duck. So I think in order to eliminate any type of misconception or ambiguity associated with what might happen within the agricultural zone within the watershed, this might be a good move for you all to review, and at least send out the planning board for their review and recommendation back. I'll also say, if this is positively looked at by the city council over time, if we look back at some of the studies, multiple studies have been done, almost 50% of all contaminants into the Lake Auburn happen outside of the city of Auburn, in the upper watershed towns, primarily due to the unfettered agricultural activities that are happening within our watershed. Those need to be controlled. And if we don't, if we claim to protect the lake, and our actions are definitely being reinforced that we are protecting the lake, we would only be doing half our job if we did not set a good standard of policy in the upper watershed towns as well. So hopefully, I'll leave it up to staff to see when they can get that order to come into us, and that's going to depend upon schedule over at the planning board as well. So I just want to let you know that I think that really kind of brings together our actions and thoughts over the course of the last year or so. Okay? That's it I have. We'll move on to the agenda. Open session. We have the first open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business, which is not on tonight's agenda. Just please step up to the microphone, give us your name, address, and let me hear comments for approximately three minutes.
Stephen Beal, 575 Johnson Road. You've seen me here many times before on a variety of zoning and land use topics. This is with regard to the substance of the planning board appointments. I've heard Mr. Whiting express that he would like to have a substantive discussion on those appointments. I think the public would like to know what the mechanics of these appointments are. A couple of them are very self-explanatory. Item two and item four are simply reappointments of present full members to those positions. Self-explanatory. Item number three seeks to appoint Mr. Jacques from his present alternate status to a full-time member for a full term. Apparently, one present planning board member either has chosen not to run or has not been renominated for a new term. It would be nice for the public to know who that is. Item number five seeks to appoint David Trask as a full member, but only for an abbreviated term.
Excuse me, sir, that item is going to be on tonight's agenda.
Those appointments?
Number five will.
Well...
It was pulled off the consent agenda. So five, six, and seven, those three appointments will be covered under new business, which will, there'll be a time for public discussion as well on those.
Even though they were on the consent agenda?
They've been pulled, and now they're on the agenda, and there'll be appropriate time for public comment on those.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Anybody else in the public who'd like to speak in tonight's first open session? None being? We're going to bring it back to the agenda. Next is Order 15-01032023, amending Order 22-02072022 to include website redesign and associated costs.
Point of order. You skipped item one. Sorry.
There goes my New Year's resolution. Well, that didn't last long, about an hour and 30 minutes. Thanks, Council Staples. Now, on to new business. Next is Order 14-01032023, directing the city manager to acquire the necessary property to optimize a new engine two station, New Auburn, and allocating up to $25,000 from the American Rescue Plan Act funds in support of this initiative. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Council Walker, Council Whiting on the second. Open this up to the public. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this? None being, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Mr. Manager, do you want to just lead off, just so you can explain this a little bit in detail? I think it was well explained in the...
That's fine, Mayor. So as you know, we've been having a public safety plan, looking at our public safety facilities. Engine two was a site that is in New Auburn that was considered on whether or not it should remain on South Main Street or move to another location. If it was to remain on South Main Street, additional land was needed to be optimal for the building to allow for engines to drive through the firehouse rather than backing up into the facility. To do that, we needed to acquire more land in the back. Also, this building is our oldest public safety building. It currently will remain on-site while a new building is being built, so that extra land allows for that to happen as well. It's very difficult for us to transfer that engine out of that community during that build. So this works well for us to be able to make this a successful project in the future.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments? None being, I'm going to ask for vote. All of us in favor? Opposed? None being, passing unanimously, 6-0. Next is Order 15-01032023. By Council Staples?
You got it.
Amending Order 22-02072022 to include website redesign and associated costs to the list of projects that were approved or the allocation of ARPA funds. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Council Staples, second from Council Walker. Open this up to the public for discussion. None being. This is just a simple, basically, well, I'll let the manager go. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. It's important when we allocate ARPA funds that what we're specifically spending... It's important when we allocate ARPA funds that what we're specifically spending is in these orders as we move forward with reporting out ARPA allocations. So, even though you had language that required, that allowed for software purchasing, this was also the dark fiber account, being specific on this was important. What we were recently notified on is that our host vendor that we have for our website is no longer, will no longer be hosting our website. This is a good opportunity for us to go ahead and make the upgrades that are necessary for our website. This website was probably completed with a little bit of modification back in 2009, '10, somewhere's in there. So, we were certainly in need of a new website. And then we'll also need a new host for our website moving forward. These funds will help cover that.
Any questions, Councilor?
Yeah, so, you know, the city maintains several websites, so there's the Go Auburn website, the school website, the city website. Would this allow for the consolidation of those into some sort of centrally-run website, potentially?
I think that some of the websites do make sense to go ahead and merge in. Some of it can be done behind the scenes, so they can still obviously access the same websites, but then behind the scenes, they'll be hosted and it'll be the, you know, within that, that structure. Council of Staples, I know you're familiar with that. So, we will look to explore that. The school updated their website, I believe, not too long ago, but I'll have a conversation with the superintendent.
Just to add to that, I mean, I'm happy to lend my expertise. I'm not a website designer, but I do know quite a bit about writing websites, so if there's some sort of a review process that needs to be happening here. And I would also just throw in Brian Bellnap on the school committee as well. I think he's got that sort of expertise, too.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments? None being asked for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? None being, 6-0, passes. Okay, next is Order 01-01032023, amending the Code of Ordinances, Section 16-49, security, systems, and Appendix A fees and charges under emergency management and services, removing the renewal requirements and associated fee. This is the first reading. Public hearing will be held during the second reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Council of Staples, second for Council Hawes. Open this up to the public for comment. Okay, let me explain just real quick where the genesis of this came from. Last year, actually, the year before, we started a comprehensive review of all of our regulations, permit fees, and so forth. We eliminated, Assistant Manager Wood was helping to steam that forward. We eliminated close to 40% of fees and permit regulations, streamlined what we did in government service. This one came to my attention from a constituent that I happen to live with, who yells at me every year for forgetting to pay the $5 annual renewal fee on my security alarm system for my house. Come to find out, just by, you know, getting yelled at for four or five years on this, it probably costs the city a lot more than $5 to process the $5 fee. Talked to the city manager. He did some further research. I'll turn it over to him to come up with a conclusion of why this is on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. You're not, your wife is not the only one who has complained regarding this ordinance. We have many national businesses that do business here in Auburn that will not cut a check for $5. That becomes a challenge for us as we work through navigating that with them as a business and doing business here in Auburn. What we discovered was the renewal, when the ordinance was first put in place, was there so that we were keeping up with any new information regarding an alarm system. Looking at the renewal applications, very rarely do we get any changes in the application because the location remains the same and also the owner remains the same. If it's transferred, then it's a whole new process that they need to apply for a new alarm system. So, if a home is sold, then they would need to go through that process. Really, what we were looking to capture was whether or not there was any information regarding a key holder, if an alarm system was to go off, so that we could contact that person to come in and manage that. Most of that's with businesses. And the 911 center, although Director Hall didn't mention it, one thing that they also maintain is our business listing for all our businesses, as well as updated contact information that's done on a regular basis. So, our information was already being collected, and the need for the $5 annual renewal fee was more of an annoyance, as the mayor mentioned. You can see where we were receiving revenue. I mentioned that through the information sheet. Really, our major purpose for having the alarm ordinance is to manage our false alarms. Without having this and not having a fine structure in place for false alarms, people not take serious their false alarms that go off. It will not take serious, especially some businesses even, with ensuring that they have their proper code to shut their alarm system off. So, what that does is it does force our police department to respond to a false alarm that repeatedly for a location, so that the ordinance has done what it needed to do as far as reducing our false alarms. That's still a high number. We still respond to a lot of false alarms, as you can see with the revenue that comes in through fines at $14,000. So, that is still occurring, but it's something that we do, we're able to manage. The need for the renewal just really isn't there. It's a lot of staff time to process those and to chase down the $5 that people forget to pay. So, 30 new applicants is what we receive annually for our alarm system. All of our alarm companies that do business in Auburn know that we have an alarm ordinance. They communicate with those businesses. They've set up a good process within their installation, so that they're bringing the alarm application. People know what it is, and they go ahead and submit it with a $30 fee. I went through and took a look at what other communities were charging. We're less for an alarm permit, but I didn't see any need to increase it because really what we're, as I mentioned, it's trying to manage the false alarms is what's key for us. I think that's all the information, Mayor.
Any final comments on this? None being, ask for a vote. All those in favor of removing a pointless fee? It passes, 6-0.
For order, that should be a roll call vote.
Saw that, didn't read that. Thank you. How about a roll call vote?
Councilor Gary?
Yes.
Councilor Whiting?
Yes.
Councilor Hawes?
Yes.
Councilor Moran?
Yes.
Councilor Walker?
Yes.
Councilor Staples?
Yes.
Passes, 6-0. Okay, next, we have, from the consent agenda, three new pieces of business. First one, Order 05-01032023, appointing David Trask to the planning board, full member with a term of expiration of 1/1/2025. Do I have a motion? Councilor Gary, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Council of Staples. Open this up to public comment. None being, debate? Any debate?
I really don't have any objections to any of these three people that I asked to be pulled off. Well...
Public comment. There'll be another one if you want to speak.
Okay. I just, I noticed that a person who had been on the planning board for a year, Joshua Daigle, was seeking reappointment, and he wasn't selected. And I just thought with all the turnover that we might want to consider reappointing him, just to have some stability on a fairly unstable board.
Is there any other comment? Debate? Motion?
Yeah, so, I guess I would, I definitely agree with you on that. I think that, you know, this is a board where we invest, you know, we invest time and we get people up to speed on how to make these decisions. There's a lot that goes into it. I know Josh is, I don't know him all that well. I've seen him on the board. It seems like he's coming along and he's, you know, he's becoming a productive member of the board. I don't know what went into the decision not to put him back on here. I think that, I think there should be a place for him here. So, I, well, let's put him in here. So, I like to make the motion that we amend this and appoint Josh Daigle.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor for Council of Staples and a second from Council Whiting to replace David Trash, Trask with Josh Daigle to the planning board, full member with a term of expiration of 1/1/2025. Motion on the floor, all those in favor of the motion? Opposed? We got a tie. I break the tie. I am opposing. Motion fails, vote 4-3. Is there any other comments on the motion? None amended? None asked for a vote. All those in favor of appointing David Trask to the planning board, full member, term of expiration 1/1/2025? Opposed? Passes, 4-2. Next is Order 06-01032023, appointing Amanda Garette to the planning board associate member with a term expiration of 1/1/2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Council of Staples, second by Council Walker. Okay, anybody in the public like to speak on this?
Stephen Beal, 575 Johnson Road. I'll reintroduce at this time the comments that I was attempting to introduce during the public session. And this is not on the substance, the qualities of any of these people, but I think it would be in the public interest to know each of the people for whom the particular nominee is sought to be replacing. It seems that the appointment of Mr. Trask is for a two-year term, which suggests that since these are all three-year terms, that someone has either resigned or has otherwise been removed from the board for some reason. I think the public would like to know that. With respect to the appointment of Mr. DeRoche under item number seven, that's for a three-year term as an alternate, since Mr. Jacques is presently an alternate and is becoming a full member, it suggests strongly that Mr. DeRoche is replacing Mr. Jacques as an alternate, but that's not apparent. And the same with respect to Mr. Daigle, although we've already had a vote with respect to appointing Ms. Garette, that was for a shortened term of only two years, which strongly suggests that that's Mr. Daigle, but I don't know that to be the case, nor does anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say that I'll look at, you know, there's information that goes out to the public on this within the packet on the applications. Each individual has an application. Does it specifically, you know, lay out whether or not this person is quote-unquote "replacing" someone else, and if so, why? No, it doesn't. You know, there's terms of expiration for a variety of reasons, primarily two. One is the terms expired and a new three-year term happens, or the person has resigned, stepped down. And sometimes those reasons are, you know, best left to be confidential on the reasons why, just as long as we know whether or not they resigned or not. So, I will look at that. It's a good note. Thank you, going forward. Is there any council debate on the Amanda Garette appointment?
Mr. Mayor, again, nothing against this particular candidate. Just looking through the applicants, and I noticed that we have a farmer, Stanwood Gray, and we haven't had a farmer on the planning board for a long time. One of the first members of the first planning board was Maurice Keen. He's still living, lives on North River Road. Another one was Charlotte Bosworth. I think she may have been chairperson of the planning board, and I think he would be a good addition, and I would propose that we substitute him for Amanda Garette.
Are you making a motion? Can you make a motion, please?
A motion, yes.
To substitute, can you make a motion to appoint?
Motion to appoint Stanwood Gray to the planning board.
I have a motion to appoint Stanwood Gray to the planning board instead of Amanda Garette as an associate member with a term of expiration of 1/1/2025. Do I have a second? I have a second from Council Gary. All those in, excuse me, any discussion on this? None? I will state that, just so you know, and this is absolutely fine, Council Whiting, Council Gary, these are recommendations from the Appointment Committee. They're help to funnel it down to something that helps this body do its work. At any point in time, you can nominate anyone for an open term in any board. So, we're well within our right, and we encourage this to happen. So, Council of Staples, you're going to say something?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to point out in particular, this application to me was a bit concerning. I don't know this person, but the application contains several typos. To me, it made, it was a little bit concerning to see such, you know, such an application for somebody who's going to be so detail-oriented inside of this planning board position. So, for that, I would support this motion.
Okay, and Council Moran, did you want to comment on that? Because that came up, too, during your appointment process. There is a reason why, and I think it needs to be addressed.
Yeah, and I understand that we have a three-councilor committee, and we go over these applications, and we have in-length discussion. In regards to Ms. Garette, I know that she was properly informed by city representative of the deadline and that she did put this in, but we were aware of the typos. We did discuss that. But like I've said in the past, I think representation on these bodies is important, and I feel like an associate position would be appropriate for her.
Any other comments? And to clarify that, she, there's a miscommunication on deadline. She thought it was a day after. So, at work, she pushed it through versus going home to provide her actual application. Understandable, especially considering the source of the bad information that she was received. That was me. So, any other comment, discussion? None? Ask for a vote at this time. All those in favor of appointing Amanda Garette to the planning, excuse me, Stanwood Gray? We have a motion to amend. Motion to amend is on the floor right now to substitute Amanda Garette for Stanwood Gray. All those in favor? All those opposed? I will cast a deciding vote as opposed. Motion fails, 4-2. Back to the original motion with Amanda Garette. All those in favor of appointing Amanda Garette to the planning board as an associate member, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I will gladly cast a deciding vote in favor of Amanda Garette. That's 4-2. Passes. Next, appointing, this is Order 07-01032023, appointing Tim DeRoche to the planning board, associate member with a term of expiration of 1/1/2026. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Council Walker, second for Council Moran. Very good. Is there any discussion on Mr. DeRoche? And by the way, he is in the audience as well tonight. Any conversation, comment, motions?
Again, I go back to, you know, investing quite a bit into these members and not wanting to just throw away a year's worth of training that we've given Josh Daigle. Nothing against this candidate. I don't know this candidate, but I would like to make the motion that we substitute this candidate for Josh Daigle.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Council Whiting. Okay, any discussion on the substitution? Josh Daigle for Tim DeRoche? None being? Ask for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of replacing Mr. DeRoche with Mr. Daigle, please raise your hand. All those against? I vote in opposition. The motion fails, I vote a 4-2. Bring back to the original motion, Tim DeRoche to the planning board, associate member with a term of expiration of 1/1/2026. Any debate? None being? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, now, to the last open session of the night, if there's anybody in the public that would like to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business, this is not here on tonight's agenda, please step to the podium and speak. Give us your name, address, and let me hear your comments for about three minutes. None being, I'll close this last open session. Now, we go on to reports. Mayor's report. I've got one thing to report. As I informed you on our last meeting in December, the school committee was hearing a presentation from Central Maine Community College, as well as the dual enrollment committee. We heard this. It was a great presentation. We, Central Maine Community College has launched the Spring Ahead Initiative. This checks out most of the boxes that you all had in your resolution that went out early spring of last year. Council Moran, I'd like to thank you for all your hard work, meetings throughout the summer. But in a nutshell, every senior, every little, will have the opportunity to go full-time as almost a matriculated student at Central Maine Community College. That includes all the perks and benefits of being a student, free ski passes, free bus pass, classes are paid for, books are paid for, their lunch at the CAF is paid for. Their... There is no cost whatsoever to our students to attend. We had one week notice, and right before Christmas break, had an informational night, and there's twenty-five families that showed up with just very little notice. We have until January seventeenth, until the spring semester starts, so there's going to be about a week of sign-ups. If you have to ask me today, we're going to have a dozen or so kids in a very short amount of time move towards full-time status at Central Maine Community College in their spring semester, senior year. All these credits count towards our high school graduation. They are credits that can transfer. This is a jumpstart to allowing our students to have the ability to earn a certificate of value and an associate's and/or an associate's degree while still attending Edward Little High School, which will put us a step above most high schools in the state. Counselor Moran, do you have anything you wanted to add on that topic?
Yeah, I'm really excited about this program. It has been a lot of work, inconvenient hours, but certainly a task worth doing. Special thank you to Andrew Marong from the community college, putting together what is a workable pilot program to really observe this, and I really hope that there's opportunities to expand it, because it really does take down a financial barrier. And very thoughtful from his staff. I know it was a lot of work for them to really think of everything and all the inputs that would come in from a family trying to send their kids to school. But I think the spring forward is an awesome opportunity for the spring semester, for the high school students to get in there, kind of double-dip that credit, get towards their high school diploma, also get college credits. And a real key, and I'm going to mess up the terminology on this, a real key component to this is an orientation to really make sure that these high school students are very familiar with how to behave at school, how to get their grades, all the nuances and differences between being a college student versus being a high school student. So once again, thank you to the community college. Special thanks to Andrew Marong and his whole team that was over there. We have, we've had a bunch of very thoughtful speakers with all these meetings. Dr. Dwayne Conway, Mr. Michael Henry, Mr. Libby, who represents the Department of Education. So I'm hoping this is just a start, because it could be very impactful, and this in conjunction with the new high school, I think, is a wonderful thing for the city of Auburn.
It's a big win. I tell you what, that's one of the great things about local government. You all came up, voted, passed unanimously an idea in April, and, you know, not even eight months later, it's real. So we're affecting people. We don't need to wait three or four years for anything. We can get it done. So outstanding job. That's the only report I have. Any other city council reports? I know we've been in the offseason here. Counselor Whiting?
Just a quick comment. Joe, talking about that, brought me back to my days at Edward Little High School when I couldn't take shop because I was in the college track. My father ran a gas station. It would have been a practical use of my time to take that class. And then I was denied the opportunity to go to Bates College because my grades weren't good enough. And then I basically told the guidance department to stuff it when I got into Harvard. So this is great. This is really great to see this kind of cooperation with the community college. It's just the perfect thing for kids to move up one step that they might not have considered, and then maybe go beyond if they want to do that, or just use what they're getting there to get into a trade or some kind of career. So, thank you.
And I'd just like to expound upon my previous comments real quickly in response to Counselor Whiting. The community college is such a perfect partner, because you can leave there with an associate's degree. You can leave there with training in the trades, and they provide those certificates as well. But also knowing what the community college has, how they partnered with the University of Maine with their two-and-two program. As this program has expanded, I don't know if we'll ever get there, but my dream is that really dedicated students can walk out of high school with an associate's degree and walk into the University of Maine at the age of eighteen, when ready, potentially into their junior year. So there's a lot of work between now and then, but tearing down that barrier of entry financially, introducing these kids to the college environment is really exciting for me. It's something that wasn't there for me as well when I graduated from Edward Little High School, but hopefully moving forward, this is just the culture.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, turn it over to you for your report.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I do want to thank Mr. DeRoche for coming and being part of this meeting tonight, and also being part of local government by applying for the planning board position. We do have scheduled for tomorrow a orientation from our legal counsel to the new planning board members. I also encourage those, they already been invited, but I encourage any councilor here that would also like to attend, or the public to be part of that process, it'll be here at Auburn Hall tomorrow evening. We will have a representative from Jensen Baird do the orientation. We figure it'll be closer to about a two-hour orientation to cover the material that's needed. Just to follow up on Mr. Beal's comments, one thing that I will ask the clerk to do is to make some of that information that you were just referring to noted in the minutes of the appointment committee, so that information can be made available. I think it would be helpful, because we did have an individual not apply back for a term, and then we also had an individual that resigned their term, which is why there was only a two-year, two-year term on that. But I think if we can make that available in the minutes, and I'll talk with the clerk about seeing about, we do turn these around pretty quickly, but how we might be able to get those minutes included in the packet when doing the appointments, so that way that that information is shared. So I'll look to the clerk to help with that. The last item that I have is a follow-up to the workshop that I spoke about regarding our challenge within public safety and our hiring of police officers. We were fortunate to have one of our officers selected as a cadre for the next academy session at the Maine Criminal Justice Academy. By doing that, that then opened up us the availability to have slots to be available. We originally had three candidates that were slated to, on the list for the academy, but they were only accepting, I think, sixty, sixty-three members, or candidates, rather. We were ranked seventy, eighty, and eighty-five, so we were not going to have slots. By having the cadre, we now were able to move those three through this session. That does help us with getting these candidates in, getting them trained, getting them back, do their field training back here, and then back available for the road. We do, we are running under a shortage. We've had to collapse all support-type positions that we have within the police department to make sure that we're covering the patrol function. By not having that patrol function was requiring us to force staff for overtime, but it also impacted days off, it impacted off time. And so we've been, we've had to collapse those positions into patrol to make sure we have the coverage. But as an update, I just wanted to let you know regarding those staffing positions. And that's it, Mayor.
Yep. We already handled our executive session, truncated that after our first executive session tonight's workshop. So at this time, I asked for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in the papers say aye. Aye, we are now adjourned. Have a great night.